Good evening, welcome to the Roca City Council meeting for a closed session portion. It is five thirty-three. Do you have any public comment? No public comment, so we will close and go to, close this portion and go to closed session. Good evening, everybody, welcome to the Roca City Council meeting for August sixth, twenty twenty-four. It's now six thirty-three PM, please join us in the Pledge Allegiance. All right, just want to remind everybody to silence their cell phones at this time. And we did have closed session at five thirty, and we do not have any reportable action on that item that we discussed at that time. Mr. Jared, are you on the, online? Can you hear me? Attorney? Mr. Jared? Okay, great. After consent agenda, I do have a request, we, Councilman Keg might have to leave to, due to a family situation or emergency, so we were wondering if we could move item ten A and B after consent agenda to the front of the line? Because there's a possibility he may have to leave, is that, is that possible? Did you hear me? Yeah, is that, is that, is that okay if we move that item? Mr. Ledbetter asked me to clarify if that was okay.
Yes, all it takes is a motion of the council to reorder the agenda that manner.
Okay. What are the wishes of the council?
This is Councilman McCoy, I'll make the motion that we change the agenda to allow first call to order to public comment and then, excuse me, four, six-thirty called order, regular session. And then after that, we go to ten A and ten B, which is city attorney and city manager, new business resolution establishing procedures for the notice removal and storage of personal property at encampments. And introduction of first reading of an ordinance amending chapter nine point four-five protection of schoolchildren, bus stops, critical infrastructure and wildlife risk fires of the Wairika Municipal Code to be called camping and storage of property in public places prohibited.
Okay, I have a motion of Councilman Protim McCoy.
I'll second the motion.
And a second from Councilman Baker. I'll do a roll call. Councilman Keg?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Aye.
And I from Mayor Middleton's motion passes to into the order of the agenda. Okay. So we'll move to public participation, public comments. Public participation is welcome and invited to all city council meetings, this time is set aside for residents to address the city council on my on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. I'm going, I'm gonna do the public comment then go to you now.
Yeah. No, no, my motion was to go.
Oh. Sorry. I thought you said six A, I'm sorry, I mean, I thought you said public comment and six A. Okay. So we're gonna I didn't hear what he, I thought he said to go public comment first.
Six-thirty PM roll call to order to regular session, Pledge of Allegiance. And then go into instead of special presentations.
Oh, I thought you said public comment, I'm sorry, okay, that's my fault. That's my fault. Okay, I heard wrong. Okay, we'll go back to public comment, we're gonna go into item ten, this is new business. City Attorney and City Manager, this is the agenda title. A is resolution establishing procedures for the notice removal of storage and personal property at encampments and finding such action exempt from SEQA. Mr. Ledbetter?
Yeah, so Mr. Mayor, if you'll recall at the last city council meeting for the city of Wairika, you directed the city attorney to work with two council members to update ordinances that the city currently had that met the new ruling of the Supreme Court, and so ultimately, Councilmember Protim McCoy and Councilmember Keg both worked with our city attorney, Mr. Jared, and so ultimately, these two items came out of those discussions, so I am going to kick this item to Mr. Jared to discuss what was determined and what has been brought forward this evening.
I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Just a point of
Sorry, Mr. Jared.
I, I, I didn't contact with Mr. Jared, I never contacted me in regards to anything on this particular ordinance. Even after he had been directed to contact Mr. Keg and myself, so I just want to make that clear.
Okay, thank you, Councilman McCoy. Okay, now, Mr. Jared, thank you, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. As Mr. Ledbetter mentioned at the last meeting, we directed to bring back a ordinance as soon as possible, we immediately got to work on reviewing your current ordinance. And I did send a an analysis of that current ordinance to the subcommittee members. We didn't have time to convene as a group. I did have a brief conversation with Councilmember Keg about some of the issues relating to this. And in the interest of getting things to you as soon as possible, have provided two aspects here. Item ten A is independent and ten B, and they can be considered separately. As I understand, the motion was to advance both of them to this point. And so, Mr. Mayor, I guess we would be, as I'm understanding it, you would be, you want to discuss these two items together, or would you like to discuss them separately?
I think it makes sense to discuss them, they, they play together, but I think it makes sense to discuss them separately because I really don't see an issue at all with passing ten A personally, I don't think anybody would see an issue, it really sets policy standards to camp cleanups that we already do with Public Works. Really empowers city staff to understand the guidelines as to what the responsibility is when we do collect personal property and how long we're storing it, where we're storing it, what's considered garbage. And so I think it might be lucrative to just move forward with discussing that item, get a vote on it, and then move to the ordinance because my understanding, having discussed the ordinance briefly with a couple council members, we do have some people with differing opinions, but I don't think that they would differ on this first item.
All right.
All right, so discussing, giving a presentation on, on these in that manner, there is a shared component to, to both of these. The shared component is the rules were changed by the US Supreme Court in overruling the both the city Boise case and by implication and directly overruling the Grants Pass case. And then what really gave the impetus for creating the encampment removal procedures was action by Governor Newsom just over a week ago in adopting some policy that was previously been adopted by Caltrans. And what Governor Newsom did was then say the Caltrans policy shall be the policy of all of the agencies of the state of California over which Governor Newsom had, has authority. It didn't, his action, that executive order did nothing more than that. It did not create any programs, it did not create any funding, it did not create a a directive to go out and engage in encampment. What it was, encampment clearing, all it did was apply those standards that were already in place with Caltrans to all of the other agencies that Governor Newsom had authority, has authority over. And looking at those, those policies, it was a fairly good outline for effectively what city staff had already been doing, giving notice and collecting property and, and treating the property in various ways. The two ways to deal with property are property that is hazardous or property that is trash effectively. Discarding that property that appears to have some value to then collect it and store it for a period of time. And so that's what's in ten A, that's all that's being proposed there is to adopt a city policy. And and that policy is included as exhibit. I'm sorry, attachment one. And I'm seeing a printing error here, the, the actual policy verbiage has not been produced here. And so the executive order is not the policy that would be adopted, it's very similar to that policy. So we'll need to, to fix this. So I don't know how that did not get printed. It is very similar to what did get printed, the, the resolution adopts the policy that would be attached as attachment A, it's just what has been presented as resolution does not have attachment A to it. So at this point, it would probably be appropriate to take questions or have public comment, and we can get the, the rest of this sorted out.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jared. And Mr. Ledbetter, does the city clerk have the correct resolution?
That's what I'm checking up right now.
Okay, she's checking, okay, great, thank you. All right.
Just to clarify for the audience, it's, it's just formality, we currently clean up encampments quite regularly. This is just basically using the Caltrans guidelines that Newsom came out with the executive order. And Mr. Jared, our attorney, looked at those, engaged with Public Works, engaged with YPD, and then created a policy based off of best practice on how we go about cleaning up an encampment, so if this has to come back, it's, it's not going to change anything that we're currently doing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Questions for the council? Or Mr. Ledbetter, Mr. Jared at this time? Councilman Baker?
Thank you, Mayor Middleton, I would like to suggest that since this was not, the policy itself was not part of the agenda packet, that we continue this item to the next meeting.
Okay. We have a request to since we don't have the proper documents supporting resolutions, I bring it back for next meeting. For the wishes of the council. Okay. Everybody agrees, okay, so we can bring that item ten A back to the next meeting for the supporting documents so we can pass the resolution of okay. Mr. Jared, did you hear, we're, we're gonna, but we'll bring back that item next meeting.
Yes, did you want to take public comment on that, or just table the whole matter?
I can take public comment on it, and then, so they know that we are gonna bring it back. I believe that's the twentieth, correct? Like that. Okay, public comment at this time regarding ten eight.
Steve Bradford, Pro Nine Evergreen. I'm tired of this, I'm sick of this, this is, this is just one thing after another for the last seventy years coming to the state that we're in now. I've been watching this thing get worse and worse and worse. The state does this, the cities do this, the state does this, the cities do this, it's a game that's being played back and forth and it gets nowhere, but we spend more money on, on lowlifes and homeless people that aren't interested in becoming a part of the society or, or, you know, helping in, in any way of making our, our city and our county a better place to live. These people are crashing our, our city, and you guys, it seems like you care more about them than you do the people who live here and pay the money that supports this place. It really does, because that's every meeting we have is about them. That's ridiculous, it's embarrassing, it's pathetic. Let's get over this, start putting policy down yourselves, not what California recommends, let's come up with something you want. What do you want yourselves? I say ten days, get your stuff out of here, we're gonna trash it. It doesn't, there's no, no rhyme or reason for that mess up there on the hill. We have a, in our, in our normal way of life, just being a human being, is values, morals, tradition, you know, respect for where you live, for your neighbors, all the above. We've, we've lost that. The people do not, they don't respect us. And, and, you know, I mean, it just seems like every day is harder and harder to live among each other because the values and the principles and the morals have gone down so much. I mean, people don't even do their job anymore. It's like, oh, that's good enough, we're, oh, we're out, sorry. You know, I mean, you hear this kind of thing over and over and over again, it's not the country I lived or grew up in. You know, the last twenty years has been pretty bad, the way we've gone downhill so fast. And we've got to take responsibility for ourselves. Every city has to take responsibility for itself and start working with every city. That way they contribute, they, they put that to the counties. The counties start working among themselves, and then they put that to the state, the counties run the state, the state does not run the counties. We lost that somewhere. But there's more cities that make up the county, there's only so many counties, so there's more cities in every county that make up the county. That's how a county came about. Then there's more counties that make up the state. So we own the state, the state doesn't own us, we gotta turn this thing around. Starts with leadership. I talk to everybody I can about, you know, our morals, our integrity, our values, God, you know. I mean, that's all I can do is talk to people on the street every day and try to educate people. Because we're not getting it out of you guys, we're not getting it out of the board of supervisors, hell no, we're not getting it out of the governor. He's being paid by China. And until we turn this thing around and have China get out of our country, you know, we're, we're fighting a losing battle, but it starts right here with us. Us in this city right now, we take responsibility for ourselves, thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else have public comment regarding the removal of the storage of personal property of the encampments?
I think that needs to be some clarification for people coming up, if you don't mind.
Well, that's why I said it, I mean, I made it clear at the beginning. So this is, this is the second part to this, but this is to discuss the removal of storage of personal property and encampments, if you have a discussion regarding that matter, that's ten A on the agenda. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Five minutes on the clock, please.
Mr. Ledbetter. First, I'd like to apologize if I bring anything up that's old news, I'm vetting council members for a while, and I don't want to waste anybody's time. But just based on the information that I've heard in the last few days in regards to cleaning up the homeless encampment. There's a lot to the, what this gentleman said that's true, but you still have a big problem that has to be solved. It doesn't matter what goes on, there's a problem that has to be solved, we all knew years ago, I came in here years ago. See, there's new people coming in every single day. They don't look like they're safe, they don't look like they're honest, I hate to be judgmental. But sometimes your guard goes up and you have to protect what's yours, and I'm, I'm affected by the homeless situation in a professional level in our business, it's on Main Street. I've been in front of you before and I've told you how I deal with people.
We are coming to the second part, so I want to remind you that we are talking, not to interrupt, we are talking about the removal of the personal property up there.
But the situation right now affects us no matter what. So you can clean up the homeless encampment, but what that means to me as business owners is a bigger problem than I already have, unless you have an, and B, an alternative to what is going on. I'm not in favor of doling out money to every single person that needs it, but we also have an obligation to fix a broken problem. And that's going to take money, it's probably going to take taxpayers' money, and I can assure you that I'm not okay with my taxpayers' money going to somebody that doesn't give back to the community, but that's where we are. So before you pass this ordinance to clean up what's going on in the homeless situation, you have to consider what's missing. And part of what's missing in this is what's next, where do they go after this? If the shelters in town over the years have not been able to complete what's necessary in order for them to accomplish what's coming, then that problem should be included in this agenda item, it shouldn't be another item that gets resolved after we've break what's already broken more, create a bigger problem, and then it becomes an agenda item down the road, then how are we going to solve it now? There's a, the city has already in their building codes, a minimum standard for obtaining occupancy for a building. I suggest that you guys review that information, minimize it as much as possible. One of these shelters can get their doors open as soon as possible, there's people out there that do want help. There's people out there that need help, and I look at a problem, and I like to use the phrase reverse engineer something, so when you know what the problem is and you know what your desired outcome is, you can reverse engineer that to reach that outcome. If you do that and you approve this ordinance without fixing the problem of the bed situation, you're failing in what I would call engineering this problem. When an engineer fails, there's usually catastrophic results. So when this fails, you're going to have more crime or drugs on the street, and I'm suggesting only that you do what you can to make beds available, so the problem on the street doesn't grow or become worse. And to those that don't want the bed, to those that do want to live on the street, to those that do want to break down my neighbor's door, and the ones that I worry about every day, we have to, he's right, we have to start forcing laws, and I know that's coming. But if you don't solve these individual problems along with the encampment, you're not fixing the problem at all. So I would encourage you guys to look deep into what's really going on. Reverse engineer this situation to where it can actually be resolved and, and accomplish something positive instead of
Thank you, Jerry.
Excuse me, I do need your name for the record, please.
Jerry Stalker.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I suggest you close public comment and move on to the next item, appreciate that comment, Jerry, but that was really meant for the next item, in my opinion.
I try, and people yell at me for cutting people off. Get win for losing up here. Okay. I'll close public comment, and we're gonna go to the next item, which has to do with the kind of the first two speakers who got up and spoke on the issue, this is ten B. Agenda title, this is the introduction, the first reading of an ordinance amending chapter nine point four-five protection of the schoolchildren, bus stops, critical infrastructure and wildlife risk areas of the Roca Municipal Code to be called camping and storage of property in a public places prohibited, amending chapter nine point five-oh park regulations and finding the ordinance exempt from SEQA. Mr. Ledbetter?
Yeah, this is right in line with the direction that was given at the last council meeting for Mr. Jared to work with the two council members. I have talked to Mr. Jared about this, there's kind of some cleanup on the ability to find, but I'm really gonna let Mr. Jared kind of introduce and deep, deeper discuss this item, but the one caveat that I do want to mention, my understanding, as the ordinance is currently written, this would ban camping essentially on public property in the city of Wairika, this would not allow us to enforce that today, this would not allow us to enforce that tomorrow, there is a process, there has to be a second reading, if you did move forward and adopt the ordinance as written, there has to be a second reading of that ordinance. And then there would be a thirty-day time period that would have to pass before this ordinance would be enforced, that's my understanding, but Mr. Jared can clarify that for us. And at my calendar, we would be looking at, say, September twenty-first as to when this ordinance would be effective, that we would see the city take a stance on enforcing it, but from that, I will kick it over to Mr. Jared to go through the fine points of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Okay, Mr. Jared, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as was mentioned, this ordinance is before you as an introduction and first reading. As Mr. Ledbetter pointed out, as with every ordinance, there is a first reading and a second reading, there are very few ordinances, it can only be done on a first reading basis. This is not one of them, there might be a way to do it as an urgency ordinance, that is not before you, however, that could be at a, at the second reading. What is before you is to discuss what your goals are, or your policy goals are for enforcement in two manners. One, the breadth of enforcement throughout the city of no camping prohibitions, and the second, what the penalty would be for that. You currently have in your city code, two sections that deal with no camping. The first is under nine, chapter nine point four-five, what's been called the Critical Infrastructure Ordinance. And that was adopted in twenty twenty-two in order to comply with the rulings that were on the book in the Ninth Circuit relating to anti-camping, most notably the Boise decision. That decision allowed anti-camping in limited manner, it did not allow for cities to enforce their anti-camping ordinances citywide. That decision at the time interpreted that to, it's such a an ordinance of citywide camping to be cruel and unusual punishment. And what happened last month is the US Supreme Court decided the appeal of that case or the appeal of the Johnson versus Grants Pass case, which ruled that cruel and unusual punishment is no longer an invalidation of this type of an ordinance. An Eighth Amendment challenge to this is, is not appropriate. There are plenty of other ways or other defenses to particular challenges and citations that could happen, but cruel and unusual punishment to completely invalidate an ordinance is no longer one of them. Which means you can now proceed with having an anti-camping ordinance citywide. And so at your request, I've brought back an ordinance that cleans up the city code to be the most aggressive that we can see possible, which would be a citywide ban on camping. And that would amend your chapter forty-five Critical Infrastructure Ordinance to just make it an anti-camping ordinance. And it would also amend chapter fifty of your city code dealing with park regulations. And in that section, it's always been a, or since that ordinance has been adopted, it was a violation to camp in city parks, and parks were broadly defined to be recreation areas, which would include open space. And the reason why this could not be enforced was again, the cruel and unusual punishment aspect of those Ninth Circuit rulings. With those gone, the cruel and unusual punishment aspect, the, and the no camping in in parks can, in recreation areas, I say, recreation areas includes parks, class- uh, recreation areas includes parks, plazas, green belts, gardens, lakes, and any other property owned by the city. Um, used and operated, maintained for recreational purposes, whether active or passive. Um, and this would include um, any property owned as open space. That's what your current definition is. And so what makes this um, able to be enforced now, again, the Supreme Court saying it's no longer cruel and unusual punishment to enforce those provisions against persons who have no other place um, to um, be in shelter. The second um, aspect that's before you, um, with the first aspect of the scope, the breadth of the enforcement, the other is the penalty provision. And um, previously with both your um, anti um, critical infrastructure and your camping in um, public places, there was very little in the way of penalty. With the park regulation, the current um, penalty violation at nine fifty, one thirty says any violation of this provision um, or any resolution adopted shall constitute an infraction. So it's just a small monetary penalty. Um, and it was not in uh, in indicated how the infractions would be charged, um, meaning the dollar amount. Um, and so we've made a change there that's proposed that would change that into a graduated penalty provision of um, starting with fifty dollars, going for the first offense, then two hundred dollars for the second offense. And then subsequent offenses, um, all within uh, a twelve month period, five hundred dollars. Um, and then also Sadie saying that this could be treated as a misdemeanor and charged criminally. Um, so that is being proposed for both the anti-camping in parks and the anti-camping citywide. The, and so that takes care of nine fifty, the park regulations. Nine forty five, the provisions that deal with the uh, critical infrastructure ordinance. There was a lot of verbiage in there that was no longer required. Um, meaning um, the proximity to um, various locations, um, bus stops, um, childcare facilities, things like that. That's no longer required um, as the the basis for a a challenge because um, the court opened up the ability to have anti-camping ordinances citywide on all public property. So um, we've taken um, um, and changed uh, in particular nine forty five zero three zero, the location specific regulations and changed that section into dealing with fires. Um, there was, there was no provision um, dealing with encampments um, citywide that dealt with fires. So that is now an add into the nine forty five um, area. So with that, um, I think that is a um, a a summary of of what these two se- sections do and and how they um, they work with one another. Um, if, I think at this point, it would be appropriate to take any questions from the council.
Thank you, Mr. Jared. Okay. Questions or comments? Council Baker.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Middleton. So I just want to go over some um, possible timeframes. This ordinance, uh, Mr. Ledbetter, um, you said, you said that uh, if this is adopted tonight for the first reading, it goes to the second reading and it's got a thirty day period before it goes into effect. So you're looking at the end of September, um, the soonest. Um, I was hoping that you might be able to give us an update on the status of the shelter opening um, as well as the um, pallet shelter, the possible opening for that. Do you have those dates?
Uh, unfortunately, I don't have dates, but I did follow up because uh, I do follow up and I know Tara, I believe, is in the audience here tonight that may come up and give us some better understanding. Mr. Keg, I think, did reach out to her and my understanding was with the commercial kitchen, it's pushed back to late September. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's basically somewhere within that, you know, we're, we're looking at forty five days from tonight hypothetically, if you guys move forward with the ordinance as is. And they're looking at some timeframe that could be right around the same time, if not maybe a couple of weeks on either side of us. Uh, as far as the other location, we have done a number of things uh, to prep the area to save the county money on the grant for the pallet shelter location and Public Works is continuing to make the effort on the site uh, to prep it. Uh, the latest, I think, we're having uh, some tree topper come in and take care of limbing up and topping of the trees, but that seems to be on par with the November time period that's required for the grant for them to be turnkey and operational at the foothill site.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Appreciate that, the timeframes. That's all.
All right. You, Councilman Baker?
I got some questions.
Councilman Keg?
So on this um, infrastructure ordinance that, you know, we're talking about tonight, that's basically is this, I mean, we're changing some of the verbiage on this, Mr. Jared. Isn't that ma- basically an amendment to this? And not actually changing the whole ordinance? So I guess that's my confusion on that. And and when you change or when you're a amendment to it, does that change the timeframe of things?
No, it's um, whenever you're adopting an ordinance, either um, a brand new ordinance or a amending an ordinance um, through adopting an ordinance, um, you need a first and a second reading. The first reading can happen as special meeting. And the second reading has to happen at least five days after the first reading and needs to be at a regularly scheduled meeting. Um, so the fastest this this could possibly could have done would have been a um, a special meetings like last week, like last Monday, um, which would have been five days later in like today um, for a second reading, but um, that didn't happen. So today is first reading. Now, um, two weeks from now, at the next regular scheduled council meeting would be second reading. And then there is a thirty day period um, um, where, before it becomes effective.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Councilman Keg. Councilman McCoy?
So I have several questions, probably not necessarily directed at our city attorney. Um, couple of things with this ban on camping. I'm going to assume that means Boy Scouts don't, aren't, been a while since it's happened. I'm going to assume the Boy Scouts then cannot camp in Upper Greenhorn Park in the little Boy Scout camp there. Is that, is that correct?
No, no. That would be incorrect. There is a provision to allow for permits to be granted, um, and those could be issued.
So that would also then include like the Renaissance fairs that we used to have there? Where they can't?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
You have the ability to issue permits for specific um, events.
Okay, thank you. So I've got a couple more questions, but it does uh, and I've shared this already with our city manager. I may have shared it with some of you on council. But um, what I'd like to do, and I think that Mr. Stalker uh, has the right idea. I, I would like to define the problem. Because right now, we're voting on an, we're going to vote on an issue. And it's a very volatile issue and it's an issue that all of us and all of the people that are going to speak tonight have, are passionate about. And yet, we don't know what the issue is. And we've done this before. We've gone after a pool. We didn't know what we needed. We started after a fire hall and we've taken a year and a half or two years to to define. Do we really need a fire hall? What do we need? We have to go after that. And I don't think, I know, I can only say, I don't think I know what we want to come out of this. Um, if we're, if if we say we want everybody that's homeless to leave, well, not going to happen. So to jump to a conclusion, to pass something tonight without knowing what we want to happen, where do we want him to go? Come up and, come up and live behind my house in Cedar. I had one there about three weeks ago. Um, I've seen him over behind um, this discovery in the alley there. I've seen him up uh, by some of my friends that live on Hill. I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's what we're looking at. We have, we're going to have people start moving up with us. We have to look at the entire problem. And um, and so my, my concern, I'll go back now to the actual uh, ordinance is, and this is aimed at uh, our chief. Does Y P, Y P D have the man, sorry to put you on, on uh, the, do you have the manpower to cite?
And you'll have to come down, Chief, I'm sorry. Chip Gilman.
Yeah, Y P D have the manpower.
He's calling you down for the record.
It's, I'm not gonna, I'm not trying to trip you up. I just, I wanted to find what the problem is.
Sure, this is Chief Gilman of Y P D. Um, to answer your question, that's a difficult question to answer. I don't know where we're even going with the ordinance yet or what our plans are going to be. Um, right now, my major concern is law and order. So I'm not sure how I can answer that question.
And that's good, because I think we need to know whether they have the manpower before we pass something that's going to put more on them. And then does the city and 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 Mr. Ledbetter has been a leader in this with looking at how we can help the homeless. I'm going to say that. Does our city have the manpower to run pseudo-community service if, if we need to be packing people who are paying for their um, for their fines by giving uh, community hours? I'm just asking. So my main concern, before I yield back to you, is I want to define the problem. Then after we define the problem, then we look at the ordinance and see if the ordinance fits the problem. Because if we just kick everybody out of campground A, campground C with nowhere to go, what are we doing? We're pushing people just out, you know, in front of other people's businesses, in front of, and behind people's homes and stuff. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman.
Um, so at this
Mr. Jared?
Wait, uh, a- at this point, it's uh, of a a discussion, it really is for clarification of the um, the issue, either clarification on the staff report, clarification on the ordinance. Um, then it would be appropriate to take um, public comment and then have argument on the remainder of what to do effectively. Um, and so one issue that did uh, come up with what the chief had to say, um, of course, with any ordinance, there's prosecutorial discretion. And just because you have an ordinance doesn't mean you um, have to enforce it or enforce it citywide. And one other issue that has come up um, with a, I guess it was a question that I'd received during the week about will this mean um, people will be pushed off of private land into or public land into private land? Um, this does not take away from um, trespass rights that individual property owners have. It also gives actually the city more right to cite in um, areas, say residential areas or other areas um, where currently the city does not have the authority to cite. Um, and so one way a tool like this is used is to um, focus where people end up, um, where campers end up. Um, and it doesn't mean that it needs to be enforced citywide. But what this ordinance amendment does is allows for um, enforcement to happen citywide, whereas to this point, you have not had that ability.
Uh, Mr. Jared, the the mayor, this is uh,
Councilman McCoy.
Councilman McCoy. The mayor had asked us if we had questions and so I had referred to questions. Are you telling me now, Mr. Jared, that you do not want council to ask any questions? And do you want us to hold those until after uh, we have a public comment?
No, it it's appropriate to ask clarifying questions at this point. It's not appropriate.
You didn't like my clarifying questions. Is that correct?
It's not appropriate to engage in uh, argument and discussion um, at this point and debate. Well, this is the point, we, in order to engage in the debate, you need to have the public comment first.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I ask very, very uh, succinct questions, ask for succinct answers. And um, the only person that is engaging in argumentative is you and I at this point in time, sir, with all due respect. So I I will refrain from asking any more questions, sir, uh, based on the advice of council of our city attorney. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman.
To be perfectly clear though, no, this is the time to ask clarifying questions, meaning what does the ordinance mean? Um, that's what this time is for.
Okay. Um, I don't have any questions really at this point. Um, I do have some, um, you want me to wait for my comments or discussion afterwards, Mr. Jared? Is that what you're saying? After comments from or questions from the uh,
That's correct. This point of the meeting, um, or this item is to en- engage in discussion um, as to what does the ordinance mean? What does this change mean? What does that change mean? Um, it's not a time to debate amongst council members as to what the ordinance should be.
Okay, just wanted to clarify and make sure we're on the same page here with everybody in the council members. And I do have a uh, question, clarifying question from Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, well, the way I understand it, we already have.
I'm sorry, who's the question to? To Mr. Jared or Mr. Ledbetter?
Well, I'm looking at you, so.
Yeah, I might not have the answers, so I don't know. Okay.
We already have ordinances uh, regarding camping in our uh, books. So this is a ordinance or an adjustment to that ordinance to make it clear with the current law and the current governor's mandate. So that's what I understand we're doing right here.
I'm going to have Mr. Jared explain to you that the governors isn't really, we were ahead of the governor's orders uh, two weeks prior to the governor coming out and making his declaration and he added one paragraph stating that the city should follow what he was doing, but we already had met. So Mr. Jared was directed at the last meeting.
We were at the last meeting, yes.
Yes, and then, and make, making amendments to the
Well, yeah.
Current.
Clean up the language, but it's current, yeah.
The current um, ordinance. So that's what we're discussing now is the
Very good, that's
Changes.
That's my question.
Yeah, page ninety four, ninety three, ninety, starting page ninety eighty nine. Yep, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I can clarify. Yeah, government's action um, is really meaning nothing to the city. Um, um, his action merely was to uh, to his own agencies. Um, and he, yeah, he encouraged others to take um, um, take a similar stand. Um, and, but it did not require anything. It does not require enforcement. It doesn't um, uh, require that you do anything. Um, as was stated, you already started down the path of enforcing. We'd already um, um, analyzed what the the Boise uh, or what the uh, Grants Pass decision um, meant for you. And to answer um, Councilmember Drake's um, or Davis's um, statement, yes, there are two camping ordinances, two provisions in your current city code that deal with camping. Both of them are effectively toothless. There's no penalty provision. Uh, number one. Number two, the um, anti-camping one in nine point four or five is focused only on parks, plazas.
Go ahead, sorry.
Parks, plazas and open spaces. The um, the portion in nine point five zero is only focused on um, opens and open spaces and parks. And um, the two did not, um, the other issues that the two did not define camping the same way. And so uh, the amendment this before you And so uh the amendment this before you cleans those issues up, allows uh camping enforcement citywide, addresses the um making it unlawful to build, uh build fires citywide in relation to um camping and changes the um, the enforcement to something that actually then has some teeth.
Thank you, Mr. Jared. I appreciate that clarification.
Certainly.
All right, under that, I will go for a public comment regarding the ordinance. And if we can stick to the ordinance and the item on your agenda, that'd be most appreciative, please, when you come to the podium. The ten.
I first wanna start by saying it is absolutely imperative that we find a way to open base camp immediately. Please, I understand that there is still construction, but we can close off two sides and have two sides open. We don't need an industrial kitchen yet. We do need someplace to put these people. We are also going to, as a city, we cannot even afford a fire department. We are going to need extra police, a lot of extra police. Because now these people will be on private property, and I trust me when I say they will not be on my property. I will be calling night. If I have to do it twenty-four seven, I will. Um, and also, this citywide no camping, does that mean that when my nieces camp at my sister's house, she now has to get a permit to do so? And if so, how much is that permit? And does it also mean that base camp won't be able to have tents in their backyard as well? It is a shelter. No camping on foothill at that pallet shelter either? What about fire camp? Do they need a permit? Um, and how are we gonna pay, uh, how are they going to pay penalties with what money? They have no money, or they would be living differently. Um, and I would leave the part in about, we already have a critical infrastructure, and it already takes care of a private property. If we remove that part, then we remove childcare being safe from people sleeping in their yards, because they will be pushed off. And then you've got them in county two starting fires where, you know, we got them where we don't know where they are. Right now, we know where they are. Thank you.
All right, next.
Lorenzo Love. There was an article day in the Progressive Magazine entitled Arresting Homeless People Is The Most Expensive And Least Effective Solution. Let me quote a few passages from that article. National Alliance In Homelessness estimates that eighteen thousand people lose their homes in the United States each week. Most have never been homeless before. People become homeless because of the choices of our leaders, not the choices of the innovation to become homeless. Homelessness is a policy choice. Misdemeanors for sleeping outdoors are often not prioritized. Nonetheless, these arrests can have a terrible impact on unhoused people, since over time, they can rack up thousands of dollars in fine. This level of debt can make it impossible to get a job, find shelter. Just because the Supreme Court says that localities can invoke criminal penalties for people who sleep out, dot, outdoors, does not mean they should. It does not, it also does not mean that criminalization is good for communities. Criminalizing homelessness using law enforcement to punish the unhoused is the most expensive and least effective way to address the problem. It is cruel and cynical to impose penalties on people who may be facing real human challenges, like unaffordable rent, financial emergencies, or health and mental health. Housing advocates are in agreement, making homelessness illegal does nothing to end it. And the criminalization stands in the way of bringing about the solutions we need. Aggressive.org dated today. I encourage you all to read it. We have a serious problem. You follow the lead of your city attorney, you're gonna make it far, far worse. The purpose of this ordinance is cruelty. Cruelty towards people who have no choice, no place to go. That's the whole purpose, cruelty. Eight thousand people are evacuated from the park fire. Some of them will have homes to go back to. Some of them will become homeless. We are one disaster away from each one of us being homeless. How you treat the least of us reflects upon what kind of a person you are.
Next for public comment.
Good evening, Louise Gliano-Wyrica, and I have to say Lorenzo is a hard act to follow. So I'm at a disadvantage, Lorenzo. Uh, one of the things I would like to say is my thoughts when I was listening to Councilman McCoy talk about what the real problem is. The real problem is not people not having homes. The real problem is the plague on society with addiction and mental health. I grant it, there are some people that are probably on the hill, as Lorenzo had mentioned, that have lost their home through no fault of their own because of fire. Maybe they can't afford to rent something again because rent has gone up, or maybe they don't have house insurance because they couldn't afford the insurance. So I have great compassion for those folks. But what my question is in terms of the ordinance, because I've read the ordinance and I've heard you talk about it here tonight, was the penalties. The attorney was talking about fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, five hundred dollars. And again, I do have to admit, I agree with Lorenzo on this, is where are these folks gonna get this money? And if they don't have the money, then what happens? Do they then go to jail? I would like to see something in the ordinance that helps people get out of the situation they're in if they want help. Have something available that if they do have a penalty, then say, okay, rather than pay this penalty, would you agree to go into therapy? Would you agree to see someone about why you are homeless? Some of these people just don't have um a backup. They don't have a support system. I have a friend who has two adult children that are living with her. If it wasn't for her, her kids would be homeless. So I have, I have compassion for that. If you're gonna have this ordinance, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Garrett, then I would say that you have to have some process which, in which people can't pay for it, that they have a way of doing something in terms of, community service would be very costly because he was going to supervise them uh doing community service. You have the liability if they're doing community service, if they get hurt. So I would like to see a process in which that person, for whatever reason, they're homeless, in particular for addiction, for alcohol or drugs or whatever mental health problems, that they get some help on that, because I think that would help the situation greatly. Thank you.
Thank you, please.
I, I rarely have to raise this up. Um, my name's Debbie Scott, uh Wyrica, and I love our community. And I love our community corporately, and I, and I love every citizen that's in our community. And um, the homelessness issue is, is huge and complex. And there's no easy answer, and the issue isn't definable. It's just too big and too huge. And I think this ordinance is um only meant to be a tool. Uh, using it is optional. It simply puts another tool into the tool belt of our law enforcement and into the tool belt of our community as a whole. And how we use it is up to us and up to law enforcement. It's, it's not a roundup. That's not it. Um, and I'm uh acquainted with many people in our community that don't have homes. And I'm sure law enforcement is, is as well. So there's discretion that gets to be used. And I trust our law enforcement to use it wisely and to use it well. I don't think that it will overrun our public works. I don't think it will overrun law enforcement. Um, I think that you guys need to pass this and get it on the books so that we have a little bit more power to control what goes on in our city. How we use it is optional, but you have an opportunity and I would encourage you to take it. And uh, yeah, be wise and be thoughtful in it. It's a good, it's a good ordinance. It's fair. It's reasonable. Is it perfect? No, there's no perfect answer. So I, I hope you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next for public comment.
My name is Scott Taylor. I'm new here. I, I would like to present another side to this. For the first time in my life, I found myself homeless. I raised four kids. I put them through college. I bought a home. I was married for a couple years. I paid taxes. As a young man, I made some mistakes. I paid the penalty for them. I've now been on both sides. I, I come from Seattle originally, so I've seen the problem there firsthand. I think what's missing, after listening to all this, I agree. I'm homeless, and I agree with what has been said and, and the evaluation that you have. I also agree that to put a monetary fine on something to give to somebody who has nothing really makes no sense whatsoever. But I understand the purpose behind it and the intent. We have a problem today, and the pro- the problem is societal. It isn't just your community. It wasn't just my community. It's every community. I agree, there are a lot of people out there that are homeless by choice. They've chosen that to do drugs and to, to live that way is how it needs to be. There's a lot of people, though, that just one day found themselves homeless. I, because of mental health issues, because of other issues, lost everything. But it doesn't change the fact that, that I have some integrity and that my homelessness is temporary. I'm well skilled. I, I am a professional. I have lots of trades under my belt. I have lots of options of things that I can do for work. But right this minute, I have nothing but a backpack and a tent and a sleeping bag and hopes that tomorrow's gonna be a better day. And that I'm not here looking for a handout. I'm looking for a hand up. There's a lot of negative stigma on, on being homeless. And the fact is, the problem is very complex. It has lots of sides to it. So I guess what I'm trying to say is there's a bigger picture to look at. You know, I, I, I agree that it's out of control here. I haven't been here long, but it is out of control here. I don't see why your tax dollars should go to public employees to clean up a mess when you could walk in with a box of garbage bags and simply say, you guys made this mess, clean it up. But there has to be, there has to be some, some thing to help people get out of homeless. Not push them further into it. There, like I said, there are those of us that are just here for a moment. But there are those, if that's what they choose. You have to be able to differentiate. You cannot umbrella something and say, everybody falls in this category. Doesn't work in law enforcement. It doesn't work in mental health. It doesn't work in everyday society. You really have to analyze what you want. And then make amendments to your policies to fit the problem. But if you don't address the problem first or most, rest of it is just a waste of time, energy, and money. I just ask that, you know, places like this need a homeless shelter. Everywhere nowadays needs a shelter. But you need to really delve into the problem of why there are so many homeless. That's really all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. So my name is Rick O'Callaghan, and I am behavioral hall, I work with behavioral hall, homeless outreach, a person for the county. Um, I would like to share that we've made some huge strides in the last six, eight months. We have actually uh made some incredible strides with the community. And I think, you know, uh, there's been a couple things that have been said. Uh, Mr. Stocker's comments on um, need to have a plan, extremely important. Um, we need to figure out why and what we're do- going to do. Having rules that are not standardized, that scares me a little bit. Um, because how they apply to one person, if they don't apply to everybody the same way. Um, it's not that, that law enforcement's gonna uh take advantage. I have no, I, I, I trust these guys. That's, that's not it. But I really feel like um, people should feel safe and know what the rules are. And when you don't know what, if the rules are move, that's, that's very difficult for people. Um, the other thing I really concerned about is um, the fact that we need to have a plan that works forward and not backwards. Have things go up, such as having shelter in place before we move forward with these things. I believe that there is, it seems like there's a natural progression that's gonna happen here. Um, I, I don't think rocket science, there's gonna be rules set that are gonna come forward. You guys are gonna make those decisions. Uh, it, it's, it's just normal from where we're at now. Um, but I don't think we should, you know, in, in the thirties and forties, or into jump offs. And I don't think we should get to that place either. Um, I think that that's a bad idea. So one of the most things is for us to figure out a way where people have a place to be before rules are placed that make a, a problem for them to be nowhere. And then the other thing that's really important is if we make it illegal for them to be anywhere, then when we have people that come from other places, because other places are gonna make it illegal for people to be anywhere, then people are gonna intermix with our homeless community, which from my experiences are people from here. Really, they aren't really a tremendous amount of people from outside our community. Most of the community here has been here for a while. And so I just hate to see us spread the homeless community out further and not be able to manage that, or to provide services for that, for tho- for those in that community that really need our services. The other thing that, that I kinda am interested in seeing an outcome with is how are we going to provide services um that are really going to provide? So we have the, all these new rules. that are out. There's gonna be uh, the mental health, we have mental health court, but there's gonna be some other extensions of that. Um, so there are, there are things coming down the case that are gonna make, that are gonna fit together to uh cause it to be more centralized or more, a better program. I'm, I'm looking forward to that. I see a positive outcome. I just don't see making a rule that's gonna take like before we have a place for people to be. Good idea. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Ken Barnes, uh, business owner on Minor Street. The ordinance. Um, I think it's a good, like Debbie said, it's a good tool to add to the city. And I appreciate YPD and their efforts uh to help the local business owners. Um, at this point, you know, I, I don't have much contact with Meth Mountain out here. Um, simply because the city streets are so bad that I can't get there without damaging my car. So I stay downtown pretty much. But you know, I think to me, the most important part, I'm, I'm sorry to disagree, but I don't see anything from the county. Uh, behavioral health, to me, is the biggest waste of money we have. And I mean, it's, we see, I, I don't see anything being done by them. And we see these zombies that are walking our streets, that are plugging our downtown businesses. And there's nothing being done. And these are people that are mentally ill and they're drug addicts. We all know that. And yet, nobody from, from what I can see, nobody in mental health and behavioral health has any contact with these people on a regular basis. They're just allowed to walk around town with their sense of entitlement and just wreak havoc. They scare our kids, they threaten our tourists, and they embarrass our community. When people get off the freeway and they go downtown to support any kind of tourism that we have. And they're faced with these people that are just wandering the streets. It's embarrassing for everybody. And if, unless we can integrate some kind of plan to deal with those people in some kind of you know, some kind of manner, I think we're spinning our wheels into you know, I love the ordinance concept. But you know, throwing a, a penalty at these people is, it's a joke. It's like it's as bad as the one where if you don't have health insurance, they're gonna find you. Well, the people don't have health insurance because they can't afford health insurance. And for the government to find people because they don't have health insurance is just insanity. And, and so it's similar to that. It's like the homeless tweaker that came and threatened me when I was working on Black Bart's Grill and broke my front door. She didn't have any money to pay for it. YPD came and arrested her after she ran away. But I mean, what good is that gonna do? A $500 glass door, where are you gonna get that? Not from her, I guarantee you. So trying to cite these people and add penalties to them. The, the state of California has already given up on collecting any money from any citizens that pass due balances. So I think, you know, I'm, I'm all in favor of the ordinance. Applaud you guys for, you know, taking that step. But unless we can integrate it with some kind of a plan for the zombies, I think that we're, we're spinning our wheels. So thank you.
Hello, Tara Kill Collins. So in the five years that it took me to attain my bachelor's degree and my master's degrees in social work, I wrote every single paper about criminalizing the homeless. Sorry, about the criminalization of homelessness in rural communities. A little specific, but I'm kinda nerdy. So I thought I'd give you a little synopsis tonight of my viewpoint on it. So homelessness is a complex and multifaceted problem that requires compassionate and effective solutions. Unfortunately, the, the approach of criminalizing homelessness has proven neither compassionate nor effective in reducing the number of people experiencing homelessness. So tonight I want to explain why this approach fails and urge you to consider alternative strategies that can better address the roots, the root causes of homelessness. First, criminalizing homelessness does not address the underlying issues that led to homelessness in the first place. Factors such as lack of affordable housing, unemployment, mental health issues, childhood trauma, and substance abuse are significant contributors uh to homelessness. Arresting and penalizing people for being homeless does nothing to resolve these root causes. Instead, it merely punishes people for their circumstances, for their circumstances which are often beyond their control. Criminalizing homelessness only exacerbates the problem. When people are arrested, they face fines and fees that they cannot pay. This leads to a cycle of debt and incarceration, making it even more impossible to escape their situation. Additionally, having a criminal record creates barriers to employment and housing, further entrenching them into their homeless situation. Another critical point to consider is the cost effectiveness of criminalization. Arresting, processing, and jailing homeless individuals is expensive for taxpayers. These, these funds could be, better be spent on programs that are providing supportive services which are proven to help people transition out of homelessness. Investing in supportive services not only improves the lives of homeless individuals, but also creates a healthier and safer community for everyone. Criminalizing homelessness also diverts law enforcement resources away from addressing serious crime. Police officers should be focusing on protecting our community from violence and crime, not penalizing people for their lack of housing. This misallocation of resources does not make our city safer and can lead to strained relationships between law enforcement and the community. Furthermore, nuisance executive order does not consider the unique challenges faced by rural communities like ours. Unlike large cities, our response to homelessness must be tailored to our specific context. We have a lack of resources, a lack of infrastructure, and community dynamics that necessitate a distinct approach. Implement, implementing a one-size-fits-all policy risks overlooking these critical differences and may lead to ineffective solutions that you guys will then have to deal with again down the road. Finally, it's important to recognize the human dignity of every person because homelessness can happen to anyone. And treating homeless individuals with compassion and respect is a reflection of our values as a community. By offering support rather than punishment, we demonstrate commitment to helping those in need and creating a more inclusive, a more inclusive and just society. And real quick, I would like to share some data that we collected. Last week, we surveyed eighty-three people in the Greenway and on the hill. And uh, a third of those individuals were female, two-thirds were male. The ages ranged between twenty years old and thirty years old, living on a hill. And most surprisingly to me was that ninety-five percent of the people that we surveyed said that they do want shelter services. The primary needs that people said that they need the most are food, showers, safety, assistance with jobs, and access to healthcare. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Gerald. Steve Radford, 409 Evergreen. How many of these people are on grants that you bring up all this stuff about how good homelessness is or the uh, the criminalization of homelessness. These people are all on grants and get money from the state support this kind of stuff. There used to be a thing called no loitering. Back in my day, I was kicked off many, many places as a kid. No loitering. We used to skateboard around Macy's and stuff like that. No loitering, they kick us off. You know, it was real simple. I got picked up on Moholland Drive, not picked up, but kicked off Moholland Drive camping in my van one night. You know, I mean, no loitering, simple. It's still on the books, I'm sure, but what happened to it? Where is it? Um, the other day, I witnessed three officers de, dealing with one young man down there at the Liberty Arts Pavilion. I was sitting there having a sandwich at Ken's place there at the Minor, Minor Street Meats and I watched these officers there for like thirty minutes plus, three of them. Dealing with one little young guy, you know, twenty years old or something, you know, he was sitting there at the on those benches and we, we don't like seeing that, none of us like to see it. He finally did something about that. But you know, if you want a place for these people, you put them on a bus and you send them back to Sacramento where the problem started. I mean, it started in the government, right? Back in, in, in the day of Johnson and, and welfare and all that thing started way back then. And you know, where's welfare today? Eighty-five percent of our budget is welfare, behavioral health. The same thing down in Shasta County, they're fighting and screaming like crazy because eighty-five percent of their budget is, is behavioral health. And what's being done? Nothing. We got the worst problem ever. It just gets, keeps getting worse because you keep throwing money at it. This thing that they got going on right now is a ploy for frustration and, and you know, the confusion that we're in right now. You know, every time he pulls some little act, before it was like, they're owing out money to you guys to do something with the homeless, do something with the homeless. We spent the last five years doing something with the home. Now we're trying to get rid of the homeless. What to do with them? He's playing games with you and you're jumping to the hoops. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll close public comment at this time. So I guess we'll go back.
Mr. Mayor, there are a few points that I'd like to clarify on.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Jared.
You know, first, I, I want to be very clear that um, our office was asked to provide an update of the ordinance to address the penalty provisions and the issues with camping that were opened up because of the recent Supreme Court decision. Um, we were not asked to solve homelessness or to prepare a, a comprehensive approach to addressing social uh needs and things of that nature. Um, in, in that light, um, there was a, a comment made that this ordinance is just punitive. And there were the comments that were made about um bringing in other ways of, of providing help through an ordinance process. And um, i- indeed, that is what in ordinance of this type is seeking to do, is to um, provide a penalty. But uh, in order to urge people on to um, achieve services, to um, steer folks towards programs. Um, it is not merely a, a stick. And the penalty provision that um, I did insert into this is a graduated council provision. And there were the comments made about, well, how is someone supposed to pay a fine if they can't, uh, they have no money to begin with. And indeed, that is, um, that is an issue. It's graduated in that way towards first to get attention. Um, second, to um, get into court. Um, and third, um, a, any type of other um sanction like imprisonment. Um, as a graduated approach. As one of the speakers mentioned, however, that um, does allow for what's called diversion. And um, and so there are various programs um, that can be um imposed by the court. Um, in order to, and one thing that um, city prosecutors often do is they do not ask for jail time, even though um, they could if the um, defendant um, agrees to stay away from that area that was of concern, say, um, and, and you know, an encampment on a riverbank. So agreeing to stay away from that, agreeing to abide by all other laws, et cetera, et cetera. And it's through that, that um, those measures that uh, people avoid jail time but are still being um, guided towards services, guided towards um, compliance with society's laws. Um, there were some comments um, made. Uh, oh, the comment about agreeing to therapy, that could be part of what a, a court ordered as well. Um, there was a comment made that the rules should be standardized. Um, and this would not make them standardized. It, it appeared that that's what the tone of that comment was. In fact, just the opposite is true. Um, the, this code amendment would standardize the rules. Um, the current status quo, or I should rather say prior to the Supreme Court's decision, the status quo was that they are not standardized. Um, and there's the, the whole issue of not being able to uh enforce if someone had um, the ability to um so you wouldn't, not be able to enforce if someone did not have shelter someplace else, you would be able to enforce um, prior to the Supreme Court's decision against someone who did have a place to go elsewhere. And so that paradigm really is a two-tiered system. Um, where um, in that court um, approach, that approach of the court did create a two-tiered system which was not having equalized laws. With the Supreme Court's decision and with the changes uh, imposed in the ordinance, it does make for um, a, a standardized rule. There were some questions and comments made about um authorizing that this code amendment would authorize somehow um, camping on private property. This would not authorize uh, people to go onto private property to camp. Likewise, it would not, um, this code section uh, only deals with um, the public sphere of, of property. So if camping is already allowed on someone's property, um, that um, owner could continue to do that camping activity. This does not, when we say um, citywide, we mean hundreds of the city that are in publicly owned um, land. The um, the comment about tents being allowed or not allowed at base camp or allowed at other places where um, treating um, and facilitating homeless. This ordinance doesn't address that either. Um, my assumption would be at base camp tents would not be allowed unless there was um, a conditional use permit or other code section that did allow that. Typically, code um, cities have what's called temporary structure um, prohibitions that do not allow on private property unless otherwise allowed. Um, tends to be erected. Um, the comment about fire camp needing a permit, um, probably not. Um, that's, um, if we're talking about um, fire camp being at the, um, the fairgrounds, that's not applicable to the city. Um, purview, uh, number one. Number two, you would have emergency um, services, um, rules that would kick in there. The uh, comment about the critical infrastructure ordinance somehow protecting private property, whereas this ordinance would not. That's untrue. Um, with the critical infrastructure ordinance did was, or does, if it's currently in effect, it uh, prohibits camping within a certain distance from um, certain um uh, critical infrastructure, childcare facilities, things of that nature. This ordinance amendment does nothing to take that protection away. What it does is it um, pre, currently, that protection is uh, from that location and certain distance left and right of that. This ordinance amendment would actually make it the entire length of the street. From entering the city to exiting the city. Um, and so it really does enhance those uh, private property protections rather than taking them away. Um, this really is a, as many, several said, a tool. It is not a tool that you have to use, it's a tool that um, would allow you to use it in whatever way. Um, you could delay enforcement, you could um, limit enforcement. And of course, um, the chief could um, direct enforcement in particular areas and with prosecutorial discretion, not enforce in other areas. And I think that's all of the um, the clarifying comments I needed to make as to The clarifying comments I needed to make as to. Public comment.
I have a question as the city manager, because this is the first time I've ever heard that, uh, we have that flexibility. I was under the impression. That an ordinance is passed by the city council. And my job is to enforce that ordinance. It's not to pick and choose when I enforce that ordinance, but there's conversation tonight that sounds like. I get to pick and choose when I enforce this ordinance and I just want clarification. Are we having that level of flexibility? That's confusing to me because I'm not familiar with any other ordinance in the city that we pick and choose. We try to treat everybody fairly and equally.
So when you, when you pass an ordinance, um, you are creating a standard. You also have, um, prosecutorial discretion on whether to, uh, enforce codes. That's always been the case with every ordinance. Um, as it is with, um, the vehicle code. Um, with everyone speeding on highways, um, and yet, um, CHP doesn't pull everyone over. It's, um, viewed as, um, you, you, you. You have to value your resources and analyze what is the appropriate approach at that time. And typically, um. Um, that. That can, that prosecutorial discretion can come from the city council, it can also come from, um. The administration, it can come from the chief, it can come from an officer in the field. Choosing to prioritize one crime over another. Um, or at that various times, there are a whole. Um, a, a vast variety of reasons that go into why, uh, ordinances are enforced or not enforced at a particular moment.
To my understanding, that's in conflict with the contract I have with the city. It's pretty clearly stated that I'm here to enforce the ordinances and ultimately. I honestly, if this is to pass, I'm going to enforce it. Just so we're clear here, there's not going to be picking and choosing. On my staff, we're going to enforce this ordinance, uh, as it stands, just as I do with the rest of them.
All right. So back to the council real quick. For some last minute. Questions or thoughts?
Comments.
Councilman Keg.
So as, as we've heard from a lot of individuals and, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Your input, thank you very much. Um. We've heard a lot of, of citizens in their input. And a lot of, of homeless individuals, which is good. We need that input all the way around. Uh, I think we need to, as a council, decide. Um, what that balance is, you know, we need to know that we have services that are coming in place and we need to encourage some of those services. To help these individuals get off the streets. There's a lot of them out there that do need those services and ask for those services. Um, just like Tara was stating, you know, there's a number of them that they interviewed that actually want the service. That hopefully we could get them off the streets. So it's a big challenge for us as a city council to find that balance. Um, how we keep citizens safe, how we keep the homeless individuals safe. Um. Our families, our friends, everybody is our first priority. Our homeless individuals are our first priority because we're all, we're all, uh, individuals that are part of this society. It's a, it's a tough balance to find what that, that decision-making needs to be from all of us. Um, I'm just going to share a quick story. Um, of how we need to balance that. This weekend, we had a, a birthday party for my adopted grandson up at Lower Green Horn Park. As we're sitting there enjoying the day. Um, a couple of individuals were walking down below, um, heading towards the, the soccer field. And passing up a storm. Ran and raven and, uh. It's like, oh man, this is not, this is not looking pretty, especially at a little children's, three, three-year-old children's party. So about a half hour later, the, the male walked back, came back around and he apologized. He goes, I'm sorry that you had to hear this. He goes, this is not what I wanted, you know. For a birthday party to hear. And I go, no, it's not a proper place for a three-year-old to hear something like that at a playground. And he goes, he goes, I'm sorry. And he goes, it won't happen again. And he starts walking away. I go. Hey, let me talk to you. I go. What's, what's, what's going on? What's going on in your world? And he's going, he said, we came here about three months ago. Me and my girlfriend. We've been together for five years. We got here. Uh, we're traveling through, heading to Oregon. And stopped off, stopped off there in Warrica for a while. Ended up on the hill. My girlfriend got hooked on fentanyl. And he goes, I don't know how to fix it. He goes, I love her and I can't stay with her at this point. Goes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to leave her and head on up to Oregon where I got support. He goes, I wish I would have never came to, to Warrica. So. That's a balance we need to find. We need to help the individuals that need help and can help. We also got to protect our citizens. We got to protect, um, our loved ones. But we also need to help those who seek help. Sometimes I, I got criticized for this. Sometimes we need, do need a little tough love. Little tough love sometimes means a little enforcement. Do we do a penalty on that? Is that going to make a difference having a penalty? No, probably not. A fifty-dollar penalty is not going to make a difference. If it's a court that, um, addresses that and says that. This individual needs to seek some type of, um, mental health issue or seeks. Um, needs to seek help for drug addiction, then that might be something else. That's, that's maybe a little tough love. Um, I think all of us would, would. Definitely say that we cannot allow our city to. Take, being taken over by drug addiction and mental illness. Right now, we're faced with, uh, some challenging times because of, uh, Governor Newsom, because of the Johnson versus Grant's past case. These things needed to happen, but the timing was not perfect by no means. Um, we need to have a little bit of more of ability as a city to address these issues. We also need to be able to address these in a positive way. We also need to help those individuals to get them off the streets that do need that help. Sometimes they need to be forced to go down that road. I went to school with a, a number of individuals that. To this day said, if they did not get incarcerated and go to jail, go to prison, that they would probably either be dead. Or still doing, dealing drugs. So this is a balance that we need to find out, figure out as this council. I look at this ordinance as a tool. As something to help us make our citizens or make our, our city a safe place again. But do we need, is there more work that needs to be done? Absolutely, absolutely. We have a good start. Unfortunately, because of these two things that has transpired. That we're just on the edge. We're just so close to opening up the base camp. We're so close to open up the pallet shelter structures. Those, those two, those two places alone will handle most of the individuals. Um, that's actually want to seek help and want some type of help. So that's, that is a balance that we're looking at. If we're looking at passing this ordinance. Then I, I feel then we have the ability to. Um, as a city also to help base camp maybe move to the next level. Um, I've been communicating with Tara, I've been communicating with, uh. Uh, Amy at the base camp, that's the, the director that runs base camp. And I think as a city, we can, we can help on a certain aspects. But we need the council to make the right decisions on how we balance that out. Um. Is this ordinance perfect? No, absolutely not. There is, there's so many flaws on everything, but there's no perfect one-size-fits-all. To fix this problem. There's so many different levels. I've been dealing with this for many years, long before I got on city council. I did outreaches for. The, uh, for our church, I did food ministries. I went down to San Francisco, I went down to LA, went to Skid Row. And helped individuals. Times have changed a lot. Drugs have taken massive control over. Our country, period. Um, fentanyl is one of the worst crime or worst drugs that you can ever see. It has taken over. There is over. Um, this is according to other homeless individuals that I've interviewed on the hill, down the greenway. There is over fifty percent of the individuals that are experiencing addiction of fentanyl right now. Um, that's according to them, according to them, the, you know, numbers that they've given to me. So these individuals need some help. Um, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make the, this, um, better by kicking the can down the road. And that's basically what, um, Governor Newsom's asking us to do, is kick the can down the road. Do we need to do something? Absolutely. That's why I said, that's why I still feel that we do need this ordinance. To have some checks and balances. We need to have a balance to where we can help these individuals through services. But we also need to have some type of accountability. That accountability needs to be structured enough. To where these individuals may be forced to go someplace. Um, incarceration's not necessarily the answer, but you know what? Like I said, I had some, I had friends that I went to school with. That said, if they weren't in prison and served time, that they would probably be dead to this day. So I think we need to find a balance. Um, so I think I encourage the rest of council to ponder on this. You know, however you guys want to decide, that's up to you guys. I still feel that we need to do this ordinance. Um, it gives us enough time, I think, to get some, uh, checks and balances in place to where we can. Um, see the base camp open up. We can see, you know, the pallet shelter is going to be a little bit after that, but it's going to be right there. And in the process. If anybody knows me, I'm going to be working hard on trying to help that, solve this problem too. Um, so I encourage, um, everybody to think hard, long and hard on which way you want to go, but I think we do need. Some accountability, we need some checks and balances and we have great service providers out there that are willing to. Take that challenge and help us out in this, in this, uh, venture. So that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councilman Keg. Councilman Baker.
And thank you so much, Mayor Middleton. Um. There is no one-size solution to all of this. And I would just like, um, to remind the council that, um. This evening, we are not debating, we're not discussing solving homelessness. I would like to just remind the council members that at the last meeting, the mayor, um, gave direction to the city attorney. And I'd like to go ahead and just read that into the record because it's here. Um, uh, Mayor Middleton, I would like the city attorney to review our current ordinances to make sure they are in compliance. With state and or federal law, and I would like the city attorney to explore the options for penalty provisions. That are now available under such ordinances that are available to us to pursue. And if it's okay. Excuse me, if it's okay. Excuse me. As council. Members Keg and McCoy have experience in dealing with these issues. And have been dealing with the homeless since before I've taken my seat here. I would like them to discuss those issues with Mr. Jared. And bringing these items back and moving forward. I would also like Mr. Jared to bring back options for amending the city code if it is available to us as soon as possible. And that's what our attorney, um, has done. I also would like to point out that section. Nine point four five point oh six oh. It has the ability to pay determination where, uh, we do have the flexibility. Of evaluating if people have the ability to pay any, um, financial penalties. Um, and that we provide options in this ordinance such as completing community service in lieu of paying. An administrative fine or offered an alternative disposition which could include. Seeking help, um, that's available to them through behavioral health. I agree with Councilmember Keg that this is not a perfect ordinance, but I see it, it as a tool. And I appreciate that our city attorney has done, in my opinion, what the mayor asked him to do.
Thank you, Councilwoman Baker. Councilwoman Davis.
Well, I, I don't think we're making an ordinance against homelessness. I think there's a camping ordinance. And we're kind of trying to improve it so that we comply. With the state laws and stuff. So I think it's quite, uh, sufficient myself. I, I like it very much. Um, and there are. Uh, provisions in here as Councilwoman Baker has said for, uh. Work duty or, you know, ways to divert the fines so they can do, uh, public service. As part of them. And I think that's very good. So I, I like it and I'm in favor of it.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Davis. Councilwoman Quay.
Um, uh, great ideas that I've heard from everybody. Uh, and before I go into any of that, I just want to remind people. Um, somebody once said, we need to pass this bill so we can read what's in it. If you, if you're not sure. Go, go to your, uh, computer and look it up. It's a quote. And we got boondoggled as a country with it. Um, you know, it hurt our poor, it hurt our middle incomes. So I, I support. Having unilateral ordinance to deal with camping. Again, I do not support, as our attorney has said, that we can use discretion. We don't use discretion with anything else. You know, we don't, we don't go and say, hey, you know what? You don't have to put in your building. We're not going to make you put any sprinklers in. It's brand new. State says you got to do it, but we're not going to make you do it. Because we, we, the one thing that we as a council. Have worked with this city manager is to make sure that things are done according to the way the ordinances are written. I'm not cutting corners. So, um, talking about homeless, where did the issue begin? Well, let's talk about it. When Ronald Reagan was governor of this fine state of California. He closed down a majority of the state mental hospitals. Thank you, Mr. Reagan. We appreciate that. Uh, I love the guy, but you know, every politician does some good. And every politician has their little, uh, up, oops. And that's one of his big ups before he went on to become a revered president of this great country. So, uh, you know, I've heard, I heard two people talk about homelessness. And not having housing. You know, it's interesting, when I was at the supervisors meeting today. The supervisors and some of the people that spoke talked about housing or lack thereof. So I know that, I know that, you know, at that point, the supervisors are, you know, on the same page. They know that we need. That we need housing. Housing in this entire county, not just housing in Warrica, but we are the county seat. So we get the majority of people landing here for whatever reason, whether it's jail, whether it's coming to, uh, to the courthouse. Um, it doesn't matter. And we know that, I think all of us know that somebody gets dropped off at the jail. And, you know, they're out and before the cops leave usually, or. Unless it's like a rape or a murder or maybe a child molest, and then they're there for like a day or two for some of that stuff. And then they're out. Well, that's not the cops fault, it's not the jail's fault. Again, that's Arnold Schwarzenegger's fault. Arnold's the one that pushed for that. He's the one that pushed to send all the prisoners back here. So we have a large problem. And Mr., I'm not, I'm not going to quote anybody except for Mr. Stalker. Mr. Stalker's hit the nail on the head. We can, we can pass this ordinance so we can then talk about what's in it. And work on homeless, or we can continue to work on homeless as, as this council has and has done a very good job on it. And we have worked very, very tirelessly with Dr. Collard. And Madeline, and thank you, Dr. Collard from the county behavioral health. You have been instrumental in helping us to get things going like with Tara, with base camp, with, with the housing up here on, you know, and with. Uh, the, um. Uh, the, the, the pallet shelter. And I will speak only from my standpoint, but you have been wonderful to work with. As long as I've been working with you on homeless. You've always been there and you are forward-looking and you continue to be forward-looking. And I, and again, I thank you for that. Um, but we've got a problem. But we got a speeding problem. If we have a speeding problem. But let's get parking tickets. That'd be cool. That'd be better. It's easy. Let's get parking tickets. No, we got a problem. With homelessness. And that problem starts with no place for them to go. And that problem starts with no place for them to go. Now, you know, we don't need to put them up in, you know, in one of the bed and breakfasts, you know, in the Parsteel House or something like that or. Or that sort of thing, but we need to look at when we squeeze these people off the hill. And let's not kid ourselves. We're going to ask our law enforcement to squeeze equally. We're going to ask them to squeeze, squeeze. We're not going to say squeeze that guy, he's thin. Squeeze that guy, he's got long hair. Squeeze that woman, she wears glasses. No. You squeeze equally. If somebody's going ninety miles an hour down Main Street and somebody else is following the ninety, you don't stop one, let the other go. Not how it happens. And again, as, as our wonderful city managers pointed out. If we do this, we're gonna, we're gonna squeeze them. Now, I'm not saying I'm, I'm against the ordinance. But the ordinance does not solve the problem. We have an issue with the fire hall in the fire department. We've been working on that for, I don't know, two or three years or four years talking about it. I'll be, council has been talking about it for twenty-five. What did we do? We went and we asked, what is the problem? So we're not building something that somebody comes along and says, we don't need that. We need ten more firefighters. We don't need a new building. I mean, we have to solve this problem. And I thank you, you called it. Yeah, I just call it kind of common sense. If you've got a problem, you don't spend a lot of time, you know, doing other things. So we have people that are telling us, and this is what I wrote down. In favor of the ordinance, loves the ordinance, but doesn't support it. I'm not sure what that means, but I support that person. I think, I think, I, I like the ordinance, but I don't support it at this point in time. We have to figure out, because the ordinance doesn't solve a thing. All it does is, is, is as we continue to write citations and then on the second or third time, they end up in. In, in jail, then we end up, and we pay our city attorney to prosecute them. And that's great. Let's spend. You know, four hundred thousand dollars prosecuting homeless. Now, we don't need it for other stuff. So again, I'm not saying I don't, I don't like it. I'm saying we're going about it the wrong way. We're not addressing the problem. We're addressing the symptom. I don't like going to a doctor in America because they, they address the symptom. They're going to give you a pill and they're going to address that symptom. No, I want, I want to feel better. I want to address the problem, whether it's. Cancer or whatever. That's what I want to address. Diabetes, something like that. So, so we do need to do that. We know that, that, we know that there's not a sense of urgency at this time. If we're listening to our governor. Our governor is being pressured from DC. We have an election going on and the governor is saying, he's getting from somebody back there. He's getting that, you know, you need to get, get your state. Get everything in a row, all your ducks. And we do, again, we have to. But. If, they're not going to be in a row by passing this ordinance, but we will be arresting a lot of people. Now, if we have a place where they can go. A campground or something which you, you've alluded to, then at that point in time. You know, we, we get that all aired out. I, I think that's a good thing, but if somebody else mentioned, well, you can. You can pass it and then you can water it down later. Why wouldn't we do it right the first time? Why wouldn't we address the issue the first time? You know, I, I just, I don't understand that. So anyway. I would say, I would ask that this goes back to our attorney. Now, the first, the other thing, I don't, I don't recall us talking anything about, let's get it at the next meeting and pass it. I just remember we were going to ask for him to, to, to write it. I think we need some time to look at it. I think we need to, some time to talk about it. We need more. We need more community input, but passing it, passing it in forty-five days. I mean, we're going to pass it forty-five days and then we're going to send the chief out and we're going to say, get him off the hill. We don't want him up there. I mean, if that's what we want to spend all of our money on prosecuting them and not giving them anywhere else to go. Then I think, I think we're missing the boat. Anyway, I, I appreciate the work that everything's been done on it. I know that Mr. K worked with the attorney on it. But I think it needs to be worked over some more. And I think that we as a council need to identify a problem. Before we try and throw a solution at it that doesn't help the problem. Gets them off the hill, but it doesn't solve the problem. There are lots of other hills and there are lots of other places to go.
All right, with that, I'm just gonna make my statement brief. I'm going to move on because. This isn't a, this isn't a easy issue. We're talking about human beings as well. So I want to remind some people in the audience and everybody here that these are human beings and they're suffering probably not. You know, the best time of their life. I can't imagine saying, I want to go sleep in a tent at minus three degrees or when it's a hundred and ten degrees outside. Whatever, they're going through something. So. There's a lot of problems to address with, but it's not one size fits all. Someone might have a drug problem. Someone might have a mental issue. Someone might have lost their home in a fire and they're up there because as we know. I read posts and I read people complaining that we are. Opening up affordable housing. Well, affordable housing is one step to get people that are in an unhoused situation into housing. Thirty-two thousand four hundred dollars, I believe, or six hundred dollars is considered almost low income now. So think about that. Our average rent is a thousand dollars a month, eleven hundred dollars in Marica for a two-bedroom house. It's a tiny, have power, food. Their check's gone. They can't afford housing. So we need to continue on the path we're going as far as, you know, projects. You know, like the. Crossroads that I had the pleasure of being invited to speak at and seeing that. Open up and with the hard work of Dr. Collard in partnership with the supervisors in the county of Siskiyou. And the city of Marica and many people involved, that finally happened, but it takes all of us to work together as well. So the county needs to come together. With the city, our cities, we happen to be the county seat where there's services. And so they're going to be here because this is where majority of the services are because we are the county seat, behavioral health, whatever, but we do. Have to address many issues. But taking away or enforcing with where there's nowhere to go, you're not going to take away homelessness. You can't say, get rid of homelessness. That's not going to happen. We can get them off, you know, tell them to get off the hill, but where are they going to be? They're going to be in the park? They're going to be in your shopping center? They're going to be in your downtown area? So it could get worse where it gets better. Because we're really close to getting the pallet shelters, the. You know, the shelter opened, we're close to all these facilities and as the gentleman from behavioral health said, there's many changes that they're working on. And trying to help these individuals. So if we just react and say, the governor came out with this and start enforcing this right away without having. Solving the bigger issue. Nothing's going to be solved. There's still going to be homeless. They're going to still go camp somewhere, whether it be. Outside the city limits, on the side of the street, on the sidewalk, because when Governor Newsom announced his proposal. That dealt with state property. And then he was talking about big cities to go ahead and start doing this while they already have a lot of shelters. They have pallet shelters in place. They have facilities and for the unhoused to go. We do not. The city of Marica or any city or town in Siskiyou County do not have a facility for the unhoused to go at this time. So just think about that before you, we start rushing into this ordinance of getting them off the hill. They're probably going to be downtown and, you know, unless they're breaking. A law of any type, you know. They can hang out, you know, as far as I'm concerned, or sit at the bench or what have you, if they're not being disruptive. And are, and you're right, we do not have the police force to respond to every. If someone profiles an unhoused person sitting on the bench because they don't like it. So they're going to call nine-one-one. They're going to call the cops to come down and deal with them. So just, so I just want everybody to think about that. So, you know, we're really close to getting. These facilities close and with your question, Councilman Baker, asking how close they are, because I know where you're headed with this is. Where are they going to go if we force them off the hill and start saying. You know, go somewhere else for twelve hours, you know, or what have you. But it's, it takes a village. I know it's a. You know, it's a. Very complex. People are very passionate with one opinion or another. Silver SUV by the door over here. I was saying, mine's right there. I don't see it flashing. I wait for them to come back. Let's take a little break here for a minute before they come. Fort Escape. Silver Fort Escape. Nobody? Okay, I guess nobody in here. Anyway, so I just want to. Prepare everybody. We're, we're close to bringing a lot of, you know, hopefully the solutions, you know. I'm not saying the drug problem, you know, that's the whole beast in itself. But the unhoused, you know, crossroads, hopefully people will get approved for that. The shelter open. And just the, the way we're progressing. Hopefully it's going to solve the issue. Like I said, it's not, it hasn't been fun. And like our attorney did say. To us at our previous council meeting is our, our hands have been tied for somewhat six years because of the Boise versus I. Mern versus Boise decision and then Grants passed to the Supreme Court. Those cities in California and the night, you know, western states couldn't do anything until recently when the Supreme Court came down. But I don't want us to all react just because the governor came out and said something when we've already been moving in that direction. We want to make sure this is right, that we do have the resources in place. So when we do the enforcement, and we are going to, of course, as I would have went to my council and asked them. You know, to ask the attorney and direct us to move forward as we can now. I wouldn't have asked for that, but. You know, we're just a little bit ahead of what is going to be available for our unhoused. And hopefully, you know, I think. Everybody can do better. All the citizens, we can do better. To solving this and working with the county and just really. How are we going to get to next step? And of helping the several issues that are going, like I said, one. You know, one size doesn't fit all because we have, there's many problems. There's mental health, there's a drug issue. And there's some people who just can't get housing because of their past thirty-nine because they have felonies or they have a felony. But they have felonies fifteen years ago, but that's still haunting them today from getting a job or from getting housing. And that's sad that somebody can't move on from fifteen years ago that have a felony against them that they cannot get housing. Or a job. So they're on the hill. So I. Don't know what the answer is. Everybody has opinions. Everybody's, our citizens have talked, some great ideas, some of our professionals. And our council members have had great. Comments and moving forward. As I said, here as the mayor, it's been a problem. It hasn't been easy. Hasn't been easy at all to. You know. See our businesses frustrated and our citizens frustrated. Law enforcement frustrated. They're worked dealing with it every day too. And it's not easy for them because they haven't been able to do a lot and they get direction from us on a certain level, but they. Have laws in this, you know, what came down from the state, what they can do and not do. So it's been, it's been a beast to say the least. I, I do support an ordinance. Is this one right yet? I don't know. Does it need more time to have a conversation with Councilman McCoy and Keg? Do we really make sure this is going to stick? And do we wait just a little longer to make sure this is going to? That we really have the right. You know, amendments in place. So when it's enforceable, that we're going to be able to handle it. And maybe it's going to give it some time where it's going to be closer to these other facilities being open. So they're not just pushed to sleeping. On the sidewalk or what have you. I don't know where they're going to go if we pass this and we still have. Twenty-five or thirty days or sixty days to go before the pallet shelter and the base camp. So. I will end with that. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Baker.
And thank you, Mayor Middleton. I, I have a question. This is on for the first reading this evening. Is there a mandatory timeframe for the second? Or Mr. Jared, or if we pass this first reading this evening. Can we bring it back for a second reading in three months, six months?
Yes, all the first reading means is you're introducing it with this particular language. You can give direction to delay it any period of time. You can also not give that direction and come back next meeting and not pass it, ask for amendments. And then any amendment that you're making, say, next, next meeting, that would be its own first reading. And it could not be passed that night. And then it would have to come back at another time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Davis.
Move forward with this. What is the proper procedure?
I need to know.
Motion?
We need the motion if we are going to move forward with this first reading of this ordinance.
So move.
That's item. I got to read it. So, okay. So. Before the council is. I'm just going to reread it for, because we've been at this for a long time. So I even forgot what it was.
Read what's on page eighty-two, motion two, and then those three things.
What'd you say?
You should turn to page eighty-two if you're looking to introduce it as it currently stands.
My computer.
Read the two, and then there are three statements there.
Is that what we need to put in the motion?
You want me to read item, the recommended action on eighty-two? Correct?
So if, if the. If the motion is. To adopt the motion as presented on page eighty-two, then you would read those three things.
Okay, yeah, the motion two. Okay, thank you. So before you is the recommended action, the motion to. One, introduce the first reading and ordinance titled, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Marica, California, amending. Chapter nine point four or five, protection of schoolchildren, bus stops, critical infrastructure and wildfire risk areas. To the municipal code to be called camping and storage of property in public. Oh, wait. Didn't we skip?
That's correct.
Okay, it is right. I thought we were off. Public places prohibited amending. Chapter nine point five oh, park regulations and finding the ordinance exempt from SEQA. Way full reading of the ordinance. And finding such action exempt from the California Environmental Act.
Yes.
What are the wishes of the council? You're making a motion, Councilman Davis? Well, you said yes, but you didn't say a motion. I have a motion from Councilman Davis. What's the wishes of the?
I'll second the motion and provided that we, like you said, we have to bring this back and we have to.
I'll second the motion and provide that we, like you said, we have to bring this back and we have to, um, look at it once and this will give opportunity to the council to look at this again too. So this is a first reading and I second the motion.
I have a second for Councilman Keg. I'll do a roll call. Councilman Keg.
Hi.
Councilman Davis.
Hi.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy. And Councilman Middleton, I will do yay because we do have to bring this back. So the motion passes four, two, one in favor. It's coming back, has to come back because the first reading.
There's no changes.
There's no change.
This, Mr. Mayor, this is the city manager. Uh, can we get a five-minute recess?
Yes. Okay, with that, we'll take a five-minute recess. Okay. Back in session at eight fifty-six. Okay. So now we're gonna revert back to number five, the special presentations and our announcements. This time slot is for informational presentations, appointments. Our words represented by the city council or to the city council, Barca Fire Department appointment of Clinton E. Carson. Chief Lemus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I did have, uh, individual that was gonna be appointed this evening, but he lost interest. No, I'm kidding. No, uh, Clint was here. Unfortunately, he is a dispatcher with, uh, the Forest Service and, uh, uh, ECC and Cal Fire, so he had to go to work this evening. So, um, but yeah, great guy. Um, he has come to us with 35-plus years' experience. Now, you would think that someone that's been doing it that long would probably not want to volunteer anymore, but, um, he will be a great asset to our department in terms of his experience and knowledge in different areas. And, uh, he's looking forward to joining us and, and helping us out. So we endorse him and, recommend his appointment. So you guys have any questions? I'm sorry you couldn't meet him tonight. He was sitting in the front row here and, yeah, he says, I gotta go to work. So I told him he was sure, you know, welcome to go do that and we'll just catch up another time and when he's available. Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. No questions? Okay.
All right. Yes, sir. Yes. Yes.
All right.
Now you have put a face with a name.
Thank you, chief. Okay. So public comment, public participation is welcomed at all, invited to all city council meetings. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matter. It's listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comments concern an item noted on the regular agenda, please address the council when that time is open for public comment. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. Council members recognized by the mayor may ask clarifying questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during the public comment section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, the city councils prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not listed or posted on agenda. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the agenda. If your comments concern an item listed under public hearing or new business section of the agenda, please address the city council when that item is opened up for public comment. Please speak into the microphone from the podium. The podium, the triangle adjusts up and down to accommodate the speaker. Please state your name for the record prior to writing your comments. Please address the city council as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. These become public record. Please re- limit your remarks to five minutes. Since council is unable to take action on issues not on the agenda, your matter may be referred to staff for follow-up or place on a future agenda. The public comment period is not intended to be a question-and-answer period or conversations with city councilor staff. All right, public comment. And then before we get to that, I just want to note, uh, city clerk that, uh, Councilman Keg did leave, um, the meeting and is absent to the emergency. And he left at our break whenever, I think that was eight thirty-three.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment.
Da Maria Tri, um, I would ask just a second, please. I would like to ask you to pull item seven D on the consent agenda. Um, it was up July 16th and you all just let it slide without any com- comments. And Colleen Baker was not here to discuss this. But we're hiring a consultant at $42,000 from our general fund to look at pay raises. And we are looking at Santa Clara County who make per capita income of $40,698. And we're, we're looking at their income and our income per county is 17,570. Um, I would like to discuss this a little bit, please. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good evening. Um, my name is Michael Kupsef. I'm Siskiyou County Board of Supervisor for District Three. I'm here tonight, um, as the, the chairman representing the board. As you know, the county and the city are in negotiations over a, um, tax or a parcel annexation and a tax negotiation. Our staff reported to our board today and, um, my board gave me permission to come here and speak openly, and so did my council. So I don't want you to think I'm pulling something. And Mayor, um, Middleton and I have talked about this in the past. But, um, it was reported today by our staff that, um, the first step in this negotiation since we have not been able to come to an agreement, um, and is that, uh, the financial advisor portion of the next step is $13,000. Split between us. The first installment was 5,000 to the county today. This is over a parcel that has a, um, county tax base of somewhere around $14. Um, the county's position is and will continue to be that we maintain 100% of the base and that we are in agreement with 50/50 on the increment, which would be the growth of the future that would come from that parcel. We've taking, we've taken the TOT, um, portion off of that, but it is in our current resolution for funeral and annexations with regard to any other city that may want to do that. So I am, um, I guess at this point pleading with your council that, um, I hope we don't have to go down this road. Here we are gonna be out of pocket, 13,000 between the two of us. If we can't agree there, the next step is, um, mediation and arbitration, which can be tens of thousands, if not a hundred thousand dollar bill. Um, and at the end of all this, that I, 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 I want you to understand that this is non-binding. There's nothing in this negotiation that binds us to saying yes to anything. Um, so you hopefully have been, um, advised of that. Um, and that hopefully we can get past this, um, milestone and, and get back on track. So, um, I will leave it at that and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks to work, Kupsef. Any other public comment? All right. Let's pop a comment, go to item number seven, this consent agenda. This all matters listed under consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of a council wishes to remove the item for discussion. A approval, appointment of Clinton E. Carson of the Barca Fire Department. Approval ratification of payments issued from July tw- eighth, 2024 through July 26, 2024. See approval of minutes of the regular meeting held July 16, 2024. De-authorized modification of standard terms of agreement for service between the City of Arika and Q Consulting Group. E. Authorize the city manager to sign letter authorization for the household hazardous waste grant program. The city council actually before you is the motion to adopt the consent agenda of the city council of the City of Arika as presented. What are the wishes of the council? Anybody?
Uh, Mr. Mayor. I would, um, I would, I actually did have a question about item D, so I would ask that that would, uh,
Okay.
be pulled from the consent agenda.
Okay, so I, uh, Councilman Baker is requesting that item D be pulled for discussion at the, um, after we go through seven B, C, and seven A, B, um, C, and E. Okay? So, um, what is the, uh, wishes of the council?
I'd make the motion, uh, that we approve consent agenda items A through C and then E.
I have a motion from Councilman Baker.
Not A through C. Oh, you just asked for B to be pulled off.
D.
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 Okay, okay. Thanks. Sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm all, did I hear wrong? I circled D. Okay, D. Okay. All right, what are the wishes of the council? So I have a wish for Councilman Baker. I will second the motion. Do a roll call. Councilman Davis?
Mr. Mayor, um, Bs and Ds sound the same to me. So what one did we pull?
We pulled D, so she said A, B, C.
Davis.
D and D is Davis.
Okay, thank you very much. I vote yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
And I, Middleton. So this will be, um, seven D. This is the authorization modification standard terms agreement for services between the City of Arika and Q Consulting Group. Councilman Baker has a question for I guess, Mr. Le Better?
Yes, and I'm furiously looking for this item in our agenda packet.
If I may, it's a quick staff report. It's just a quick staff report.
It's on, uh, sixty-three.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
And just to preface this item, this item's been approved. Uh, this will be the third time. And really what you're approving tonight is you've already approved this item, but we felt we had authority based off of the resolution to negotiate the terms of this deal. Uh, but this, the city attorney wanted us to bring it back to you because ultimately there were some changes and modifications in the insurance requirements because this company will not be traveling to do this type of work. And so ultimately wanted certain, uh, insurances removed that, uh, I don't believe the city attorney has issue with, but certainly feels that that's your oversight and purview in order to move forward. And then just to preface this, uh, this is a consulting company as we move into negotiations because that's what this is for. This is to negotiate in good faith with the multiple bargaining units that we negotiate with at the county or at the city, because we have multiple, uh, different unions that we engage with. And part of being a good faith negotiator is that we do our due diligence before we come to the table and that we have comparable studies that we have like, like-sized cities, uh, that we would be analyzing in order to move forward and offer a competitive uh, b- a bargaining, uh, in order to get to an agreement. But ultimately, the city council has approved this item prior to this meeting. And now we're coming back basically saying there was some negotiation with the company to change some insurances that are, uh, beyond the standard of what we normally allow. Uh, and unfortunately, because we did move the agenda around Mr. Elsnab, who is, uh, a lot more astute to the ins and outs. So I will attempt to answer this question that you do have. And if for some reason I can't answer it and Mr. Jared can't answer it, we can certainly kick this item to a following meeting.
Uh, Mr. Le Better, thank you. I'm aware that this agreement, um, has been approved by the city council. And I believe that you may have answered just my question about comparable cities. So when this organization, this consulting firm goes out to do the compensation study, they aren't going to be looking at Sacramento. They're not gonna be looking at Los Angeles. They're gonna be looking at cities that are comparable to the size of Arika. That's my understanding.
Yeah, that's my understanding as, as well. And ultimately, y- you know, long-term forward, really, we would like to see our insurance consortium really work on getting something like this because all of the little cities, Anderson, Cottonwood, I mean, all these places, they're in a group with us for insurance. It would make more sense that we all get the same document instead of all paying for essentially the same document. But yes, we would look locally here. Obviously, we'd be looking at the county because that's our biggest competitor. We'd be looking at the different, uh, uh, cities in, in, in our very specific region that fit very similarities to, you know, the cost of living, um, and the size of the agency.
Thank you. You've answered my question.
All right. So now we'll go back for, for council to for seven D. Authorization modification standard terms for agreement for service between the City of Arika and Q Consulting Group. For the wishes of the council?
I would make the motion to approve, um, item, uh, seven D from the consent agenda.
I have a motion, uh, Councilman Baker, seven D. I will second the motion for seven D.
Councilman McCoy, I'll make the second.
I'll go for a roll call, um, Councilman Davis.
I'll vote I.
Council Baker?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Aye.
And I, Mayor Middleton's motion passes for seven D. We're to zero. All right. Uh, no old business, um.
We do have a public hearing today, Mr. Mayor.
Hearing, so number nine, public hearing. Um, public hearing protocol, the mayor will describe the purpose of the public hearing. City staff will provide the staff report. City staff will respond to questions from the city council. Mayor will open the public hearing. Public wanting to comment will come to the podium, provide the city clerk with their name and address and provide their comments. Mayor will close the public hearing. The city council deliberate deliberate on and act on the item. So this is the, um, agenda title. This is a consecutive public hearing to consider the sale of a city-owned vacant lot, assessors parcel number O six two O three one two zero zero located on Campus Drive, Arika, California. Adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase contract for real property located on Campus Drive. On April 5th, 2022, the city council adopted a resolution declaring two city-owned vacant properties located on Campus Drive to be surplus plus property under the Surplus Lands Act, SLA. I'm missing my page here, sorry. Page four.
If you want me to continue.
Finish it, you can finish it. I lost it.
All right.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Cindy Lynch, Municipal Projects Manager. Um, as you stated, council adopted a resolution declaring several properties as surplus property in April of 2022. We then went through the SLA process, sent the resolution and the determinations to HCD and sent a notice of availability to all required entities to determine if they wanted to purchase the property first, to give them the first shot at it. During that 60-day period, nobody expressed any interest and therefore we were freed to negotiate with NorCal products for the sale of this parcel. Um, and if the the negotiations have been successful, to the best of my knowledge, and a public hearing is required before the final disposition and sale of the property. So, um, I'm here to answer any questions of the council prior to the mayor opening the public hearing, if there are any.
Thank you, Cindy. Questions from city council? I have done. I have no questions, no questions. Okay, I will open the public hearing at this time. Okay, no comments. I will close the public hearing. Um, now we will go to the action item. I got my page back. So the recommended city council action is to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-six, authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase and sales agreement of the real property located on Campus Drive, assessors parcel number oh-six-two, oh-three-one, two-zero-zero. What are the wishes of the council?
This is Councilman McCoy. So moved.
I have the motion for Councilman McCoy.
I'll second the motion.
And a second from Councilman Baker. I'll do roll call, Councilman Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy.
Aye.
Mayor Middleton, aye. So the motion passes four to zero and approved.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, thank you. So now we're at number, we went through that for
Eleven?
Eleven. Well, we went that for a while, eleven, uh, city manager, staff reports and manager and staff may make brief announcements or reports at this time.
Pardon me. Yeah, uh, don't have much. Uh, I did have come down with COVID. And so I was out all of last week, uh, read some article that one in thirty-seven Americans, uh, had COVID last week. So that was pretty fascinating. Uh, and, uh, do have some good news. Uh, was notified by the Public Works Director today that next week there will be some action and some starting in the community theater. And we do have, uh, so two new hires. We have a new fiscal tech in the office and these are positions that were open and we have a code enforcement officer who started, uh, this week as well. And so we have been, uh, the clerk and myself and the community development director have all been taking turns doing, um, different aspects as along with the fire chief, um, of doing code enforcement. So it's, we're welcoming this person coming on. But we do have a house that burned in the community and I'm also told that by next week, um, that one will be down and removed and abated as well. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you for so that better. Any other staff? Nope, okay. I'll go to council members for any reports or comments or whatever you guys want to talk about. Who wants to go first? Councilman Davis?
Yes, I attended our fire state council meeting, um, last month. And, um, we were talking about the Outson Road project, which has been talked about since I've been on the council. And they are still, uh, short of the SEQA. So they haven't proceeded forward on that. But Cal Fire have been pretty busy lately, so it probably wouldn't be proceeded on anyway. Let me see, first it comes, there's an out outreach program uh, for the fire safe council and it's, uh, it's a grant. And if you choose to get involved in home and house hardening, um, they're going to be able to supply you with the information that you need to help yourself, of course. And if you want, it will come by. So it's a really good program. House hardening, you know, something that, uh, when you've got all these bushes around your house, that's good, but it's still pretty close to your house. I mean, good green bushes don't burn as easy as them dry ones do. So that, that's about all I have as far as that is concerned. I, I did want to make a comment on one of our guest speakers. I thought he was totally out of line. Um, our supervisor from weed. Um, his opinion on that annexation and mine don't agree whatsoever. And I just want you guys and ladies to understand how I feel about that. And I think we should proceed on, continue, Mr. Ledbetter is my advice and keep working on that.
All right, thank you. I think he's in, oh, yeah, he has weed, isn't he? Councilman Baker.
Thank you.
Come back.
It, it's good to be back. Um, I have no report this evening.
All right. Councilman.
Short. Um, I would like to ask our city manager if he would include on the, uh, on the docket an agenda item for our next, um, for our next session, discussion and development of a comprehensive plan to decide what to, to work, what our homeless plan is vis a vis our new homeless ordinance. Because we have an ordinance, but we have no plan on what we're going to do, other than we're going to arrest them and, or cite them and then arrest them later on. So, um, I, I would appreciate that. And then, um, I want to say it's good to have you back because I know you weren't feeling well at all the last time I talked to you. It's, again, it's nice to have you back, Colleen. And, um, last note, uh, today, when I came back from the dump, my wife and I, she indulged me and we drove down Main. And I think except for Minor Street, all the sidewalks are in, except for the corners at Minor. So it, it looks pretty good. So I want to commend, um, Royal, who's the electric and P one C or P L C, who are the contractors. It looks very nice.
All right. Yes, seems like a busy time of the year. Summer's going to be wrapping up soon. Hard to believe we're already into August and, um, I don't think I have anything to report. Everything's been kind of slow for me because we had a lot of our main people out. We had three of our main, uh, key players out of, uh, last week. So it's kind of slow for me as well. Dealing with city business, um, so the fair kicks off this week. So everybody wants to indulge in going out to the fair and supporting all the vendors out there and the four H kids that work so hard on their animals to go out and support them and, um, I think that's it. Um, except we have a probably a busy finishing up the summer and fall here at the city and going into winter. Seems like there's a lot of things going on and so. With that, I wish everybody a good night. Thank you for coming. I know it was a long one and, um, we always appreciate you coming and have a good evening. Be safe. Meeting adjourned.